In the absence of a quorum of the city council members, the city clerk will be calling the meetings to order of the city council of the city of Victorville and the city council sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. At such time as a quorum is available, the city council will reconvene the meeting, and at this time I will declare a recess of the meeting.
All right, I'll reconvene the meeting, a closed session meeting, the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the city council of the city of Victorville. At this time, I'll open it for public comment. Seeing no one, I will go ahead and turn our city attorney for items on closed session.
Thank you, ma'am McCacklin. We have on the agenda seven closed session items, however, staff is requesting continuance of three of those items. Sorry, there's seven items, four of those items. Staff does not need direction at this point with respect to item number three, item number four, item number five. We do need direction with respect to, I'm sorry, there are six items. We do need direction with respect to item two, which is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9 subsection C, also pursuant to government code, sorry, existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9A, the Carter Burgess versus City of Victorville litigation. And then we need conference with real property negotiators on item seven pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. On the agenda, the property parcels are fully listed, however, the negotiating parties are actually Lee and Associates and the city of Victorville, and the price terms of the transaction are to be discussed, and we need to get direction with respect to that. To the extent there's any reportable action, we will come out and report that either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular session meeting.
All right. Allegiance by our police chief, Captain Cliff Reynolds. So if you all please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I say quickly, thank you for your willingness to serve and lead us into this next decade in 2011, and also many blessings to you and your families as you lead us, not only during these holidays, but also as you serve out your term. With that in mind, would you bow your hearts and heads with me as we come to the Lord in prayer? Lord, we thank you for this season that is upon us, this holiday season, and all that it means. It's a great example of your love and your grace and your mercy upon this planet and the people that are here in it. And so I ask this, Lord, would you teach us and would you train us as a community to be a shining light of your grace, of your mercy, and of your peace? We love you, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather together tonight, and I pray your blessings on these proceedings in your name. Amen.
First, we have our Military Banner Program, which was started by our mayor pro tem, Rudy Cabrealis, and what a wonderful program it has been honoring those that are serving overseas to defend our right to be here and our freedom here in the United States. And the first one that I'd like to recognize is Jaclyn D. Cisneros, and accepting this will be her mother and father, so if I could have them come on up. On behalf of the city of Victorville and the city council, we'd just like to thank you and give you the opportunity to say a few words about your daughter.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Victorville City Council, and Monica, she's the one who got the ball rolling, and I'd like to say I'm very proud of my daughter, and may God bless her, same with Victor and everybody else over there. We just want him to come home. Again, thank you, thank everybody, we're very proud of our daughter.
Thank you. And she is serving in the U.S. Army, I forgot to mention that. And then our next, Victor Leanos with the U.S. Marine Corps, his wife will be accepting the certificate on his behalf.
You want to hold up the picture, Mila, so everyone can see it? No, okay. I wanted to thank the mayor and the city council for this honor, and I wanted to thank my family and our friends for all your support, and God bless all the trips out there, and Jaclyn, they're fighting for our country, and all they, you know, all they think about is coming back home, and all they know is that that's their job, so please support them. Thank you.
Thank you. He's protecting that picture of Dad, I don't think he wants anyone else to see it. Well, and these banners will hang throughout our city on our light standards, so as you drive around throughout the city, please take a look at those and remember that they're fighting so hard for our freedoms here in the United States, and appreciate that. All right, please join me in, we have our city of Victorville Bright Light Citizen. It's my pleasure to acknowledge amazing people who take, make a difference in our, in our community each and every day. Tonight, I'd like to invite Representatives David and Tracy from the Lord's Table to talk about their organization and their volunteers, so if I could have them come forward, please.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Zuniga, and this is David Vigil, we're representatives of the Lord's Table, a ministry here in Victorville, serving the homeless and the needy of the community. Our mission started over 15 years ago. I am here representing my mother, Dolores Zuniga, who is the executive director and founder. We serve over 200 meals a day to the needy and homeless of our community, as well as providing outreach and support for all those in need. A major part of our organization are the volunteers who reach out and give their time, talents, and treasures to us in order to complete our mission in serving others as well as each other. So I'm going to pass you over to David, who will give you a little bit more on two of the people that we are recognizing tonight.
Thank you, Tracy. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Mr. and Mrs. Ramon and Gloria Alvan. I'd like to thank Ramon and Gloria for their excellent volunteer work at the Ministry of the Lord's Table. Ramon and Gloria have volunteered at the Lord's Table for several years now and have showed their willingness in helping not only the needy, but everyone who surrounds them. At every moment, they are eager to lend a helping hand to anything that needs to be done at the ministry. They are always attentive to the people that come in to eat, listening to their problems they may have, and offering them a solution. They are, they are a spiritual couple who hold our blessed Lord very close at heart. There is a verse in the Bible that Jesus says, "Whatever you do to the least of my brethren, you are doing it unto me." So you can imagine how blessed this couple is and how it is a privilege to have them volunteer their time with us at the Lord's Table. Ramon and Gloria have also taught us what real friendships are about and how to live a holy life with our Lord. In my opinion, we have learned much from them. Ramon and Gloria are always available and eager to help Dolores Zuniga, the Lord's Table Director, in anything that needs to be done at any time of the day. I can truly say that Ramon and Gloria are both thoughtful and committed citizens who make a world of difference when volunteering their time at the Ministry of the Lord's Table. Thank you all, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, the Victorville City Council. May the Lord bless you.
And on behalf of the city, the city council, we'd like to present you with the certificate of recognition for being our bright lights recognized.
Who wants to go to the heaven? Come on, come on. So you want to come to the heaven, come to the Lord's Table. Right there is the heaven, where you can serve the poor people. We are so happy to serve the people. Before, we don't know, we are just in an arts circle, you know? But after my husband retired, we thought it's the end of our life. My husband was kind of depressed, but you know, so blessing God gave me Felix and Dolores, they are from us like 30 years ago. When we come here to live, always she invited us, and you know, for one reason or another, we don't, we don't ask, we don't answer Jesus, because Jesus was who called us. And one day, you know, I told him, let's go see what is going on. I'm so embarrassed all the time, she asks me. And we went over there, and it's going to be three years we serve over there, and we are so happy, we start to live another life, and this is the really life. So if you want to come to see how is the heaven, I invite all you guys come to the Lord's Table, and give a big hug, God, and Felix and Dolores. Thank you so much, and God bless all of you guys.
And they get a one-night spa romance package at the Hilton Garden Inn, so that goes along with the recognition. All right, and then for recycle week, I have a few presentations that will be given by Marissa Frat from our Public Works Department and Stephen Bradshaw from Burt Tech Waste. If I could have them come forward.
It's on, okay. Thank you very much. We just finished up our recycle week, and we actually have quite a few presentations to do for all the participants. And what we've done with recycle week is we go into the schools and we promote the recycling so that we can bring it to the homes in Victorville and with the current legislation and meet what they ask for us to do in our recycling, and we've been more than exceeding that. So we're going to go ahead. Check, check, okay. Hi. Okay, so for our poster contest, we had almost 1,300 posters submitted from the students from the city of Victorville, so that's a really great amount. So I'm going to go through and announce our third place. So of all the schools, the top three I have here today, their third place poster winner is Kim Huang. Okay, our second place winner for the poster contest is Chayden Hogan. We do have goodie bags for all of our students. Okay, so our grand prize winner for the poster contest will be receiving $150, and they'll also have their poster displayed at the Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility for one year. And our grand prize winner is Mindy Yun. And this is her poster here. students. Our third place sculpture winner is Alex Lukasiew. Okay, our second place sculpture winner is actually a tie, is Alyssa Lyra and Sarah Warman. An apology to this. Not actually a tie, they worked on theirs together and did a really good job. Okay, and our grand prize sculpture winner, who will be receiving $150, and all of these sculptures will be displayed at the Victor Valley Murph, is Crystal Lau. We asked all of our schools to collect shoes, and the school with the most shoes will be receiving $250. And that school is Mojave Vista Elementary. Our school that collected the most newspapers, they collected 341 pounds, is Cobalt Middle School. Okay, our last collection drive was for CRV bottles and cans, and this will also be receiving $250, and that school is Village Elementary. Okay, so now we're getting to our top point winning schools. For all these activities, our schools earned points, and we're awarding the top three point winning schools. Our third place point winning school is going to be receiving $100, and that school is Mountain View Montessori. Our second place top point winning school will be receiving $500, and that school is West Creek Elementary. They will also be receiving our recycled trophy, and they'll get to, it's a perpetual trophy, they will get to display it at their school for one year, and then pass it along to the next year's winner. So.
The Heisman.
And that school is Cobalt Middle School. I just wanted to thank all of our schools for all of their hard work, they really did a good job and showed how important recycling is for our community, so thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the first item on all the agendas, and that's public comment. And I have one card. Wait for the chambers to clear out a little bit.
Ma'am McCacklin, I also do have an item to add, if you want to do that after public comment to the city council agenda.
Okay, we'll wait. have one card, Al Cotillo.
Nice to see a bunch of new names up there. Anyway, I got a lot more confidence in you people than I had in those people. I'm here to talk about animals, animals I care a lot about. I work with a group called Pets Forever Found, and when we give, we go at Pet Smart every Saturday, we get 12 or 13 homes for animals, and these people have to sign a contract with us, they can't give the animal away to anybody else, they have to, we make sure they get their shots, we give them a coupon if the animals aren't six months old, where they can go get them spayed for free, and then we give them a chip for free. Now, on the other hand, we've got these people here that are breeding dogs in Victorville illegally, and they're selling them at Walmart, at Food for Less. We need somebody out there getting rid of these people. You can't call the police every time to go do that. Code enforcement out, no animal control on weekends, somebody's got to stop those people from doing it, because they're just fighting what we're doing. Now, the other day, I got a call from out in the desert, and somebody said, there's a dog been out here for three weeks, starving to death. So I went out and searched around the desert, and I found this beautiful black lab. I took him, he came crawling to me, crying like a baby. I took him, I put him in my van, I took him home, I fed him, I got him spayed, I got him neutered, I got everything he needed. He's got a home now on a two-and-a-half acre ranch with a half a million dollar house, and he sleeps in bed with the kids, and they love the dog to death. We do that every week. These people over here are fighting us, and they're doing everything illegally. Now, last week, I went and had a talk with them, and there were some pretty big guys there, and I told them, this is illegal, and you got to leave. But I did call the police before that, and they ain't got time to go bother with that stuff. You know, you got to have somebody, and another thing, if you can get some vouchers out. I was talking to people today, they said, we got to get our dog fixed, they said, we can't, they don't have any more vouchers. I mean, that's, you know, one dog can produce 22 puppies. I had one dog have 11 puppies in my bathroom. And animals are important to me. People are dumping their horses out in the desert, I don't know if you know that or not, and these horses, when they're dumped out there, they're all skin and bones as it is, because they haven't been fed. And they're dumping them off over there on Ridge Crest, they're dumping them off down 138, they're dumping them off up by Silver Lake, and these horses, you know, they're getting, coyotes are getting them, the wolves are getting them, the bears are getting them. Something has to be done about the animals in this city, there's not much being done that I've ever seen. And we are volunteering waste, I spent over $2,000 of my own money making sure animals get what they're supposed to get in a good home. The girl who started Pets Forever Spa, and she, so far, she spent $11,000 of her own money. So I hope we can get some help somewhere. I hope you and I can talk about what we talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure it gets done.
All right. Okay, I don't have any other public comment, just want to make sure, is there anyone else wishing to address the council under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into the library board of trustees. Any revisions?
No revisions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number two is the selection of chairman and vice chairman, and I'd like to take, take this item along with the same item on item along with the same item on SCLRA, A, SCLA, Victor Valley Water District. I believe that's it. All is one item, is that appropriate?
That's appropriate, the all meetings are properly agendized.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to choose the chair and vice chair.
I would like to make a motion that we have the chair and the vice chair be the representatives on these boards or in authorities.
The mayor and...
The mayor and the mayor of them.
Mayor of them.
Yeah, would be the chair and vice chair.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, those items have been dealt with, there's no revisions to the agenda. We do have the consent calendar. One second.
I need to abstain on the minutes.
Okay. Okay, we'll move into the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. We've done, dealt with the selection of chairman and vice chairman, are there any revisions to the agenda?
Excuse me, Mayor McCracken, I believe we have one written communications item under library.
Oh, I apologize, I missed that, let's go back. Okay, written communications request to approve an additional appropriation to purchase computers for the children's department in the amount of $5,600 to be paid for by the Friends of the Victorville Library.
When would you like discussion on this?
Right now, we can have.
Okay. I just wanted to make mention that on item number five, there is no budget account number listed on the staff rack. Seems to be a common theme throughout the agenda.
Mr. Cox or Mr. Robertson, you want to address that?
Typically, the budget account number is listed if there is an additional appropriation. In this case, there's not. If that's something that the council desires to be added to the agenda, we can certainly do that, but in our past, we've only listed the account number in the case of an additional appropriation.
Okay, now, moving on to the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. There are no revisions. We do have a consent calendar.
Approval?
Second. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Are there any revisions? Hearing none, then we do have the consent calendar.
Approval?
Second.
I need to abstain from the minutes.
Item number five is a request to approve amendment number three to the sublease of hangar number 746 with Federal Express Corporation. One second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Item number five indicates that Jim Worsham receives a commission of $40,000. Don't we have employees with job descriptions that entail economic development duties for SCLA?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Do we have employees with job descriptions that require economic development duties for SCLA?
He's not an employee, he's a consultant. All employees at SCLA have job duties and descriptions, but I don't understand what...
Well, my point is, is that we're paying him commission to bring in businesses to SCLA, correct?
That is correct.
Do we have an economic development staff that does that?
Mr. Mester, you want to address that issue?
Yes, if I might. We do, in fact, have staff as a part of the Economic Development Department. We do have a marketing division, which is largely responsible for the business attraction marketing for general services of the department. SCLA is newly a part of the Department of Economic Development, but even before the merger and the reorg, there were specialized marketing services relating to aviation-related tenants. So, for quite some time now, I don't know exactly how long, Mr. Worsham has been retained largely because of his expertise and his knowledge and his relationships in the aviation industry. Those are relationships that not necessarily anybody inside the city organization has had since we had taken over as a department and overseeing the operations of SCLA. We have retained Mr. Worsham largely on a fee-for-service commission-type structure as opposed to a previous structure, which was a salary-based structure, and we identified very specific goals, roles, and responsibilities with respect to what we were hoping to see Mr. Worsham achieve. Largely, he's been responsible, and among the items that he's currently working on is continuing to procure Boeing-related flight test operations. He's been instrumental in procuring and continuing to procure FedEx, which is the item before you. But as it relates to the larger marketing to the aviation world, that is not necessarily an expertise or an experience anybody within the city organization has had, and therefore was determined to find somebody that could bring that experience to the table to help us keep our facilities leased at SCLA.
Is it correct that previously he held a $400,000 contract a year with no performance clause?
I cannot confirm that personally. I do not know, as that was not my area of responsibility.
I received an email today showing that he's received a total of $2.1 million. Do you know how much revenue he's brought into the city with that?
I don't know specifically without further research.
Would you say that your staff is not at the level or competency level to retain businesses for SCLA? Is that why we're using this consultant?
I would not say that, and that is not the reason why we're using this consultant. He certainly supplements the abilities that your marketing division, your marketing staff, and the Department of Economic Development currently have.
Would you say in the future that your staff can handle this?
I have not determined that yet at this time. We are still assessing.
Also, I noticed on the staff racks that there are no budget amounts as well as account numbers. Why is that?
Because budget amounts are typically expense-related. This is largely showing a revenue, the expense being charged against the revenue category.
Mr. Mayor, on the next three items, item six, seven, and eight, we request that you continue those to the next regular scheduled meeting of the City Council on January 4, 2011.
Okay, we have a request to continue agenda items six, seven, and eight. We'll move on to agenda item number nine, request to approve the execution of lease agreements for buildings numbers 761 and 771 at SCLA with United States of America Government, the Black Hawk Aviation Unit.
Approval?
Agenda item number 10, request to approve the execution of standard sublease agreement with Boeing Company for building number 685 A and B. Item number 11, request to approve the sublease agreement with Leading Edge Aircraft Services for hangar number 756. We'll now move into the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
We have the consent calendar for the minutes of November 16.
Approval?
Second.
Again, I need to abstain from the minutes.
Item number four is a request to approve the owner participation agreement by and between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Prime A Investments LLC, Huron Boulevard Apartments LLC, and Desert Valley Inc. in the amount of $500,000.
Approval?
Second.
I have a question on page 367. The cost estimate for improvements to the hospital, is it from internal engineers or external?
It is from the city's engineering department.
Thank you.
Item number five, request to adopt resolution R-10-008, approving the second amended and restated agreement forming the Auto Park at Valley Center Association, and approve an expenditure of $50,000 for auto park marketing.
Approval?
Item number six, request to approve an advertising agreement by and between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and High Desert Autos, Inc., DBA Valley High Kia.
Approval?
Second. We will now move into the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority agenda. The only item on the agenda is the consent calendar, which is the minutes from November 16, 2010.
Approval?
Second.
Again, I have to abstain.
Right now, we'll move into the Victorville Water District agenda. We've dealt with item number two, are there any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
All right, we'll move into public hearings. Item number four, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the activation of latent sewer functions and service powers for the Victorville Water District.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And counsel. In regard to item four and five, I would request, since this is an advertised public hearing, that you open the hearing, take any testimony that's appropriate, and continue this until the meeting in January 4. I also authorize the city manager to meet with Kathleen McDonald of the Local Agency Formation Commission. There have been issues raised that we're not sure how to answer, we're not sure of the authority of LAFCO to be involved in the process, whether or not the city council would lose its authority or be subject to another jurisdiction. I've discussed this with the city attorney, and we certainly respect the rules and regulations of the Local Agency Formation Commission, and Kathleen and Kathleen McDonald as the administrative head, we want to make sure that there's no misunderstandings. But the very purpose of this request is follows. The Victor Valley Water District, Baldi Mesa Water District, which are county water districts, were merged into the Victorville Water District, and Local Agency Formation Commission established the Victorville Water District as a subsidiary district of the city council. And the code is very clear, that the city council is the governing body of the Local Agency Formation Commission. We have questions that we're not sure that are appropriate in regard to, are we required to still follow sections of the county water district law? And what does that mean? Does that mean that we pick and choose which ones LAFCO wants us to use? We have such items as, well, you can't be the chair or the vice chair, it has to be president and vice president. If the mayor and city council are ex officio members, they're ex officio members. Point it out, well, this is a water district requirement. Well, a water district requirement's also to have an election, appoint a general manager, to do a lot of things, and those no longer apply because the city council absolutely is the board and establishes policy. There was also a request that, what about the general manager? The general manager would be appointed if you had water district employees, but if, we're not sure what the meaning of that is, there's a lot of questions raised, except for the following: if you look at the Local Agency Formation Commission resolution that was adopted, it specifically provided that they would have no employees, that they would be employees of the city. The city ordinances and all the rules and regulations specifically provide that the city manager appoints all employees of the city. And so, we have a conflict, and to rather than proceed and to get crosswise because of the misunderstanding, what we need to do is to authorize staff, and the attorney if necessary, to sit down and clarify these issues with the Local Agency Formation Commission, because we intend to move ahead with our sewer treatment plant. We have a merger now of the two districts into the cities of Water District. At the present time, the Director of Public Works, a temporary assignment until we get things worked out, is effectively over that department. There are city employees, there are not district employees, and the confusion continues to reign, and so, before we make a request, I don't want LAFCO to grant the Water District the right to have sewers and sewer lines and all the sewers in the city, because that district goes outside the city, and now you would have sewer powers in unincorporated areas of the county, which is not the intent, was never the intent, and there's a condition, because if you put sewers in unincorporated areas, you now can divide lots, and you can now increase the density of the buildings that are being built, which then you increase the amount of runoff and traffic, and those are under the jurisdiction of the city council. That's why all of this must remain under the council, and we've got to clear this confusion up before we proceed. We'll work on it as quickly as possible. We've scheduled as a public hearing. Our intent is to move forward as quickly as possible. Our intent certainly is to satisfy the requirements of the Local Agency Formation Commission, but certainly, we want to clarify these issues before we take affirmative action.
Lean in favor of that.
Okay, just to be clear, you're indicating four and five, you're, we should open up the public hearing, can I do those together?
You may handle those both together, yes, open the public hearing and then continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, so, for the benefit of those in the audience, agenda item number five is a public hearing to hear arguments for or against approving the district map justification for proposal and supplemental activation adopting a resolution VWD-10014. We'll go ahead at this time and open the public hearing on both agenda items four and five. Anyone wishing to address the council for or against? Okay, seeing no one, then we'll go ahead, and I'll move to continue agenda items four and five to our January 4 city council meeting. Okay, those items have been continued. Agenda item number six is again another public hearing, this is a request from staff to cancel public hearings for ordinance numbers VWD-004 and VWD-005. I still need to open a public hearing on this request? Since it's under public hearings?
These ones, we're actually canceling the public hearings, we're going to fully re-notice the public hearings once we get the appropriate documents in place.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second. Then we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Cabralis, may I get a vote from you? Thank you.
Okay, next item is consent calendar.
Approval?
Second.
I need to abstain from the minutes.
Next item is agenda item number eight, a written communications request award a contract to Kelly's General Contracting and Engineering Company in the amount of $43,850 to lower an existing water pipeline on Eucalyptus Street from Richmond Street to 150 feet west of Ritalane and add to the CIP list as an eligible project.
Approval?
Second.
I'd like to ask staff some questions. Who would I be addressing?
Since upon the question, if it's an engineering matter, Sean McGlade is here. If it's in regard to the fiscal impact of the budget, then that would be Doug Robertson.
Sean, can you explain this recommendation?
The, I think it was the Baldi Mesa Water District at the time put in a water main along Eucalyptus. They followed the grade of the dirt road, which, and they put it in somewhat shallow many, many years ago. There is a developer who's willing to put in the improvements for Eucalyptus to connect it out to 395, but we found that the water main is too shallow. So this project would go in and lower the water main in the area where it would be otherwise too shallow.
I see. So we did not initially put in a shallow pipe?
Well, I think the Water District at the time, Baldi Mesa Water District, did put it in too shallow. They just followed the grade of the dirt that was out there.
But that's not the fault of our staff, correct?
It's a problem that we inherited, I guess, yeah.
Inherited, correct. All right. That's all.
Agenda item number nine is request to approve a change order to the Forecon Engineering Contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $87,530.
Approval?
Second.
I'm struggling with the amount of change orders. Can I speak with an engineer?
Sean, could you address all the change orders? Because there have been several of them. I kind of concur, they continue to come back at us. When are these going to end?
Let me ask the first question. Is this a design build or design bid build?
This project has about 15 contracts associated with it.
Design bid build?
Well, somewhere, somewhere not. It's a mixture.
Okay. Can you explain to me why we would have to go with a design bid build over design build, which would limit our liability and fast track?
Well, there are two viewpoints on design build. Well, one being is that it drives the cost up substantially, because a contractor is not fully aware of the work involved at the time it goes out to bid. There is still a level of design work that needs to occur. His bid would be fixed. But as a result, he's going to cover unanticipated costs. The benefit of design build is timing. Design bid build takes longer to get out on the street, but in my opinion, it is more cost effective, because the design is clearly known as it goes out to bid. Contractor has a clear work scope and bids accordingly with line items. In this case, we had roughly $46 million worth of infrastructure to get out in a limited amount of time due to contractual agreements with Dr. Pepper. And as a result, we moved forward with whatever we had ready to go to bid with and followed on with a design build concept. And there was a mixture of projects, some eight or nine contracts were associated directly with the wastewater treatment plant, and the balance were the supporting infrastructure.
My experience with design build is quite opposite of yours. It's the fastest to construct, the most effective, and least risky for the owner. The change orders would be at the designer's cost. So I'm struggling with the amount of change orders. Can you tell me how much in change orders have, has it cost up to today?
I don't have that number for you. I can get it, though.
I would also like to know what the percentage of change orders is of the entire project.
Yeah, I'll get that for you as well.
I'm a little reluctant to approve any more change orders at this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to point a clarification, that on this item, for Forecon Engineering, it's actually a credit change order. It's reducing their contract by $87,530, not an increase to the contract. I believe some of the work that they were going to do was actually done by other contractors. That may be some of the change orders that we're going to get to later in the agenda. But this one is actually a credit, not an increase.
Thank you for that. I'll look forward to those numbers.
Sure.
I didn't know if the mayor wanted some further information?
Well, I just want to know if we're going to, how many more of these we're going to see? We'd like these to come to an end. Obviously, the plant is done, it's operating. You know, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how much more you're expecting. I think that that would be a good thing to get at, and I don't necessarily need you to answer that tonight, but if you could let us all know what's left to be expected, so that we don't continue to see these agenda after agenda after agenda.
Understood. I'd just like to point out that the methodology that we used was not total contract for every single piece of work needed. Though it was always anticipated that we would have to fill in holes in the bids, if you will, where not any one contract covered work. And it was much better to decide at the time which contractor would be best suited to fill in that hole. And as a result, there were anticipated change orders to the warrant.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the problem is that, you know, it's gone over the contingency limit that you said, and that, I think that, in the scheme of things, you know, it's less than the 46 million, but yet for each one of those, you know, for the contracts that are contingency, it's gone over. And I think that's what you're struggling with.
Right. I think when we look at the total $46 million budget, we're still under it, just, but we're still under.
Is the $46 million that was budgeted, was that originally budgeted from the very beginning of the project?
I believe it was since June of 2008, yes.
Okay. So, why weren't these change orders considered at the time of the RFP process? Why weren't these items that you're requesting for change orders excluding the credits?
When we went out to bid, we knew that it would be better to take a look at what was happening as far as the timing of construction at that time to decide who would do that work. During the construction, there isn't time to go out and do a full bid on a particular piece of work. There's advertising minimum periods of time and going through a contract, a bid opening, a contract award. And it was much more expeditious to get the work completed under a change order of an existing contract where that contractor is on the site and is best suited for that work.
I guess that's why design build is faster and more cost effective and not so convoluted in what we're dealing with today. I just want to ensure that your staff and you as well have the expertise to manage these projects effectively. That's all.
Thank you.
Item number 10, request to approve change orders to the Panorama General Engineering Contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant to increase the contract amount by $36,198.
Approval?
Second. Item number 11, request to approve change orders to the Moro Meadows Corporation Contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant to increase the contract by $52,332.
Approval?
Second. Item number 12, request to approve change orders to the Aherns Corporation Contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant to increase the contract amount by $13,203.
Approval?
Second. Okay, we'll now move into the city council agenda, and our city attorney has an item that we need to add.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. I would like to add an urgency item pursuant to government code 54954.2B2. That would require a finding by this council that there is immediate need to take action on the item, and that the item arose after the posting of the agenda. The item in question is an agreement between City of Victorville, City of Adelanto, and the Federal Bureau of Prisons related to the base annual production water allocation previously attributable to former Georgia F-4 space. The reason that this came up so late is that on Thursday evening after the posting of the agenda, the Mojave Water Agency took an action to basically approve in concept the settlement agreement amongst the parties. Part of this agreement requires the City of Victorville to pay an amount of $620,000 and, $602,000, sorry, $820 for the 2008, 2009 water year. It's the makeup obligation that would have otherwise been attributable to the city. This was, this agreement is a result of a mediation approach. MWA is asking that we approve it expeditiously, and that they are trying to receive the funds immediately, and that we can avoid interest payments on it, which would accrue. So we're requesting that it be placed on the item, and then we can consider the item.
Move that we add the item?
Okay.
All parties involved in this request are in agreement to this?
That is correct. Everybody is in agreement in concept. On the presentation of the item itself, I would request, and you have copies of the agreement in front of you, that you approve it with such nonsubstantive changes as may be approved by the city manager and city attorney. There's a little bit of tweaking in the language to make the agreement consistent with the actual terms of the water adjudication. We'd like to clarify that. We spoke this afternoon with the Adelanto attorney. He is in, he is in agreement with the agreement. MWA is in agreement with the agreement, and previously, the Bureau of Prisons has signed up on the agreement.
For clarification, to your knowledge, there is no opposition to this?
That is correct.
Okay, and that will be added to the agenda when?
It's at your pleasure. We can do it at the end of the city council meeting. Or we can do it now.
Well, we'll, I have a request, so we'll do it, let's do it after consent.
Fine.
I'm going to go ahead and take the liberty of moving agenda item number 11 forward before public hearings. I have a special request. We have some folks in the audience that need to, I think, leave early. So with that, I'll move agenda item number 11 to, ahead of the public hearings. If we could go ahead, have that agenda item. This is a request for a variance from requirement to extend approximately 200 feet and connect to mainline sanitary sewer located at 12833 Wagon Wheel, Victorville, California APN I do have a few cards. Helen Barkowski?
My name is Helen Barkowski with Share Realty, and we represent Mr. and Mrs. Houston, who are Holman, I'm sorry, Houston Holman, who are sitting right there. We are in the process of an escrow, and in that course of the escrow, we had a septic inspection, and the seepage pit had failed. We also learned in speaking to staff, to your staff, that it would cost roughly about $25,000 to hook up to the sewer line. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Holman have a severe financial hardship and are unable to do this. It would cost $2,400 to put in a new seepage pit. This property is on a half acre parcel, and once we can get that done, then we can proceed with our escrow. I also have the selling agent here also who would like to speak. Everybody on our end is in agreement. If this is not accomplished, then they will really have a burden. They came in from Houston, from Utah yesterday, just to be present here, so if you have any additional questions. So we respectfully request a hardship variance and let them put in their seepage pit. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have Zachary Betts.
It's, for them to be able to do this, particularly with the other neighbors, they would probably have to wait to be reimbursed when the other neighbors hook up, for they have to pay for that whole 200 feet. The rest of the neighbors are upside down, like the rest of the world right now. The national average is, what, 48% are negative equity? So people who would have other problems don't have the ability to pull into their house like they would to pay for, to be able to connect. So this puts a hardship on them, but it puts a hardship on the rest of the people. It makes economic sense now, with Victorville having a 65% negative equity rate, to wait until such time as people have the ability to be able to make that adjustment when home values return.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. Second. Okay, that item has been approved. All right, we'll move back to agenda item number three under public hearings. This is a request from staff to cancel public hearings for ordinance numbers 2269, 2270, and 2271. I do not need to open up a public hearing, just requires a vote. Agenda item number four, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Valley Center Drive Phase One project between Lorraine Drive and La Paz Drive. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item number four? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council. I'll make the motion. Agenda item number five is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against amending certain subsections of section 17.64.060 of the Victorville Municipal Code and the introduction of ordinance number 2268 entitled. Do I need to read all this? Yes.
I read the title after the close of the public hearing.
Okay, all right. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on agenda item number five. Anyone wishing to speak to us on agenda item number five for or against? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Victorville amending certain subsections of section 17.64.060 of the Victorville Municipal Code for the purpose of clarifying the types of securities for which lien agreements may be substituted and making certain other clarifying changes relating to cash, deposit requirements, and reversion to acreage in the event of default or breach of lien agreements.
Wait further reading and move item, ordinance number 2268.
Agenda Item Number 6 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adopting the housing element for General Plan 2030 as set forth in the proposed Resolution 10-085. Again, I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 6. Anyone wishing to speak for or against on Agenda Item Number 6? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, Item Number 7 is the Consent Calendar.
I need to abstain from the minutes and I'd also like to pull Item G for discussion.
Okay.
With approval.
Second. Okay, if we could handle Item G on the consent calendar and then we'll go into the added item.
Ms. Fias? Okay. I need more time to study this item. I understand it is the second reading, however, you do have two new council members. The land use table is what I'm struggling with. I don't find it as business friendly. At least two businesses this month have been turned away due to this table. I think more consideration needs to be made in making this city business friendly. I'd like to continue this item for an additional 30 days so I can be brought up to speed.
Okay, we have a request to continue Item G and bring it back, which, second council meeting in January?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth? Okay. Is that your motion to continue that item?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Okay, and then we have the added item and I think you've gone through a lot of it, but anything else to add?
No, unless you have any additional questions. Again, the agreement has been agreed to in concept by all parties. The stipulation in terms of approval would be that it is contingent upon getting the other party's execution of the agreement before we release the funds to the MWA and such other very minor non-substantive changes as approved by the city manager and city attorney. Basically, those pertain to definitional issues, but the gist of the agreement is an allocation of the base production rights at the base on a 60/20/20 basis with 60% being allocated to the City of Victorville, 20% to the City of Adelanto, and 20% to the Bureau of Prisons. Upon execution of this agreement and the transfer documents, the MWA will then book the allocations of base annual production. It's 34, 33 acre feet, but it is subject to the annual very frequent ramp downs. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, well, I think as we've previously stated, all entities involved on this are in agreement, so this is not on the agenda, so I'll entertain a voice motion on this. Well, I mean, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this agreement, allowing the city manager and city attorney to make non-substantive changes should they need to occur.
A second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, request to ratify the expenditure plan for the 2009 Homeland Security Grant Allocation Fund, 44900 for 2010, 2011, and authorize city manager or his designate to process all documents required for program administration.
With approval.
Second.
I have some questions regarding this staff rec. There was a lack of information on it and me and the city manager were puzzled as to what it was for.
Well, it's good to see I wasn't the only one that made three of us. These were items that were allocated and purchased prior to my arrival. This was 2009 Homeland Security Money and basically these were two handheld FLIR devices which are used for looking for criminals in the dark. It basically shows a, an object that will glow, if you will. You've probably seen it on television shows. And you can also use it for disaster recovery. The fire department could use them as well, looking for victims that might be trapped in an earthquake or something similar. These were purchased and all we're doing now is formalizing the documentation for the feds.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 9 is request to award a six-month contract to Victor Concrete for concrete repairs, Project MB11-011, an amount not to exceed $50,271.23. Agenda Item Number 10 is request adopt Resolution Number 10-087 entitled Resolution of City Council, City of Victorville, Amending Traffic Regulations of Certain Streets Within the City by Establishing a Four Way Stop at the Intersection of Paiute Roads and Tamarisk Road. Agenda Item 11, we have already dealt with. Agenda Item Number 12 is request to amend the service provider agreement with Woodard and Curran for interim operation and maintenance services and increase the not to exceed amount by $250,000.
With approval.
Second.
Oh, I'd like an explanation on this staff rec.
The last fiscal year, there was an agreement entered into with Dr. Pepper to receive their flows earlier than the wastewater treatment plant had been planned to be completed and running. We also entered into an agreement to have this interim treatment so that Dr. Pepper flows could be handled through the wastewater treatment plant without being treated and then discharged into the VVWR. The cost associated with that was $25,000 per month, which was reimbursable from the agreement with Dr. Pepper. However, none of the bills came through in the last fiscal year and the amount was not carried over. So, this would in fact go retroactive back to about January of 10 and come forward to cover the costs associated with the VVWR billings and also the Woodard and Curran monthly charge for handling the waste.
As an employee finance director for VVWR, can I vote on this issue?
You know, you are a salaried employee of VVWR. It is not a crystal clear issue, however, based purely on the fact that you are a salaried employee, there is not an apparent conflict of interest. In the abundance of caution, it's always advisable to abstain if there's even any potential view of a conflict. We have not found anything that would be volatile at this point of either the Political Reform Act or the provisions of 1090. It's essentially your trust. I have found nothing that would indicate that you have any conflict of interest on this item.
Just to be clear, that the action on this item is a contract with Woodard and Curran and this action does not involve the, any payments to VVWR.
Thank you for that clarification. So, this, this was not anticipated in the beginning because of, you just don't know until you get started or?
The desire for Dr. Pepper was to be in operation sooner than we had agreed with them to have the wastewater treatment plant finished.
The desire was on the City of Victorville's part or was it on Dr. Pepper's part?
To...
To get started sooner?
Yeah, yes. Dr. Pepper's schedule was ahead of ours, so when they completed their waste, their processing plant, they needed to be able to get into operation.
Why wouldn't they pick up this cost?
They are.
They are.
They are, okay.
They are. I'm sorry if I didn't explain that. The agreement with Dr. Pepper is that they cover this cost.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 13, discussion and possible action regarding appointments to cities committees by council members. We've got a number of them here.
Yes, the Planning Commission appointments and really of the advisory committees. The only one that is active at this time is the Community Services Advisory Committee. The other two are still in existence, but they don't, they haven't met in a number of years actually.
Okay, well, with respect to Community Services, Ms. Fias, with my appointment to that, I have not at the current time come up with anyone to appoint to that yet, so I'll wait on that.
Okay.
Rudy, you already have someone to that?
I have someone, but I, you know, we're gonna, I would, other than if there's a pressing, the need to appoint someone to the Planning Commission, but the other ones, I think, can wait and we have, we do have two other council members that are not here that might...
That's correct. And the Planning Commission's January meeting has been canceled, so that does provide a little extra time as well.
I have no one for Community Services at this time or Planning Commission. I was going to ask the council for, I guess, the funds or the approval to advertise for a planning commissioner? Is that appropriate at this time or?
Yeah, because it's dealing with this item and I don't have any issue with that.
Okay. Did you just need a consensus or?
I would assume that's within the purview, as long as it's consensus, it's probably within Jim Cox's expenditure limitations to do that.
I hope it's under $25,000 to advertise.
Well, I have the authority to spend the $25,000, but not contrary to council's opinion.
Well, if it's gonna cost $25,000, I'll deal with it on my own.
But if, because it's a departure, it's a council, if there's no objection from the council, I understand, place an ad in the local newspaper of general circulation inviting individuals to apply for the position of Planning Commission, not the other ones. Planning Commission, is that correct?
Yeah.
And I'm sure there'll be a story.
We'll do that.
All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number 14, discussion and possible action regarding appointments to city council committees, commissions, and boards.
I, I would rather wait for the full council to be here.
To do all those.
If Angela has something pressing there, you know, because there are, there are several, like the VVWR and the Transit Authority and we have Terry Caldwell joining Almond's position, so I don't know if I want to wait or if you want to volunteer for some of those.
I can, do I need to nominate myself? What, what, which ones are open without stepping on toes?
Well, I know, because I was trying to bring that up right here. Could you read off the, which ones are being vacated by Councilmember Caldwell and Almond?
Yes, Councilmember Almond at the, she was the second alternate to VITA, the delegate to the Transit Authority, the alternate to the San Bernardino County Flood Control District Zone 4 Advisory Committee, and there was an appointment, council liaison to the Community Services Advisory Committee, and I don't know that she attended those meetings regularly or not. And Terry Caldwell was, this shows delegate to the Mountain Desert Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority, but that has since changed. Mike Rothschild is currently serving as a delegate for that. Delegate to VITA and the other two, delegate to the Solid Waste Task Force, that is the same thing as the Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority, and chairman of California Clean Energy Resources Authority, which is now, that, that has dissolved, that they haven't met in years, so.
I'd like to throw my name in the hat for VITA.
Okay, well, I'm kind of with Rudy. I think we should have a whole council here to discuss that. Normally, the chairperson of SCLA would serve as the delegate to VITA and then we would have an alternate. I'm not sure about having a second alternate. I don't, is there...
I believe Mike Rothschild is first.
Yes, Mike is the first alternate.
Their president to have a second alternate, is that a part of our...
No, Victorville has just done it once or twice because in the, over the past years there's been occasions when both the delegate and the alternate have been unavailable, so we designated a second alternate. However, it's pretty unlikely that that person would ever need to be in attendance. It just is in the occasion that the meetings, that the delegate and the first alternate are unavailable, very rare. And VITA's only meeting now quarterly at this point.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm with our mayor pro tem, Cabralis. I'd like to have a full council here to have that discussion, not just about VITA, but all the different commissions and boards and committees that the council members sit on, because I think it's appropriate that we all have the opportunity to chime in on that. So, I'm gonna ask that this item be continued at least till the January 4th meeting? Okay, with that, we'll get into council reports, presentation of reports from council members, and I'll start with Ms. Fias.
Okay, well, here's the agenda that was prepared on Thursday, right here, and the city's closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, obviously, and I would like to request that the agenda be provided to council members a week in advance so that I can have better time to prepare for the meetings and get the necessary information to make informed Item number 2, I would like to see financial statements, investment reports, and debt schedules presented with our agendas. I think it's important that when we make financial decisions here, that we have that information current and readily available with our agenda, especially, you know, with the investigations that we have going with the grand jury and the Securities Exchange Commission. I truly believe that if we had financial statements with our agendas, that the council could have made better informed decisions financially for the city. I've heard, you know, many excuses that we have had, lack of staff, lack of manpower, there is no time due to the pending investigative bodies that are in here investigating, but you know, the fact still remains that, that our city staff are only working four days a week. So, obviously, you know, there's, there's a resource of a fifth day that they could get to work on these statements and make sure that we have that information readily available. And I think that we pay the city manager a great salary for results and not excuses, so I want to make sure that, that I am prepared with the, with the tools to make successful decisions for this city. So, I ask the council to support me in ensuring that we have these reports every time we get the agenda. Also, I'm, I'm very concerned about the city attorney's invoicing amounting to $9 million in the last five years. From what I understand, these legal costs do not include legal fees for personnel and litigation on all, all of the failed projects. I would like to know exactly how much we are spending in total in legal fees in the next board meeting presentation. Also, I would like the staff to prepare... Also, I would like the staff to prepare a report on what it would cost to get rid of the red light cameras, and how can we afford to do this at this time, or if we can. And I have been receiving, especially during my campaign, enormous amount of complaints from citizens regarding day labors on the corner of Center Street Park and Hesperia Road. Reports that they're harassing the young girls when they go to school, to urinating, using drugs in the yard, front yards of residents, and also passing out drunk in people's backyards. I don't know how much validity there is. I would like the police department to prepare a report on any complaints in the area, or maybe patrol that area to see if there's any of that behavior going on. It's difficult for me to be everywhere and to see it all. And also, I would like to have a report from staff on what it would take to fill those eight officer positions that are vacant. I think that Victorville is, well, I know that it is the most dangerous place to live in the high desert, according to FBI statistics, and I'd like those positions to be filled and for staff to look at ways of filling those positions. And I'd also like the police department to prepare a presentation of an action plan to reduce or cite the number of panhandlers that we have out in our city that are creating a hazard on ramps and exit ramps from the freeways to just harassing our residents at gas stations and grocery stores. And I'm gonna try to spread out my requests. Maybe next board meeting, I'll have a little bit less.
Ready?
I have none.
Okay. I have none as well, other than just to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll be back here on the 4th. Are there any items that council members would like to see on future agendas?
I would like to see a presentation of a timeline on completing monthly financial statements, investment reports, and debt schedules to be presented in every agenda, and an RFP for a full-service law firm for a lesser cost to the city. And we already spoke about the Planning Commissioner advertisement. And also, I'd like to see a staff report on canceling Jim Warsham's contract and using internal staff to recruit businesses to SCLA.
Have anything you wanted to put on a future agenda? All right, I have none, so with that, we are adjourned.